Program is sponsored by The Greek. Healy's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Healy, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Healy, Nevada. Regional Planning Commission meeting, April twentieth, two thousand twenty-two.
We'll call this Wednesday, April twentieth, uh, two thousand twenty-two Regional Planning Commission meeting to order. If I could get, um, uh, I guess this week, I need to read the public comment. Thank you, actually. Yes.
I usually do.
All right, so, public comment, uh, public? Pledge first?
Pledge of allegiance.
Okay. All right, let's go, please, we're starting off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as all.
Okay, so, we'll start off with public comment. Public comment during the RPC meeting will be for all matters, both on and off agenda, and will be limited to three minutes per person. The commission reserves the right to reduce the time or limit the total time allowed for public comment. Comments during discussion items may not be accepted from the general public. The commission may prohibit comment if the content of the comments are willfully disruptive of the meetings, like being slanderous, offensive, inflammatory, irrational, or amounting to personal attacks or interfering with the rights of other speakers. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing on the agenda items and/or attend and make comment on the item at the commission meeting. Uh, open for public comment. Anybody have any public comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Chairman, in reading the RPC minutes of March sixteen, two thousand twenty-two, Tim Verdean stated the end of general service person license to view installations. I've never heard of such a license. I'd like to know who issues it? What type of work is allowed under that license, such as building setup, water sewer, and electrical hookup, if any? The minute stated that there were two subject tanks on the property in question. I'd like to know who approved the request and who inspected the installation. Is Mr. Verdean licensed to install, uh, subject tanks also? Why was, uh, Nevada Administration Code MRS, uh, excuse me, four point four point seven five eight to eight two zero now followed? It basically states that if one's property line is within four hundred feet of a sewer and water line, one must connect. That wasn't done. I'd like to know who approved installation of subject tanks or tanks, whatever the case may be, on that particular property. When was it put on the agenda for approval by this board or the utility board? If it ever was. I've not seen anything. I haven't missed very many meetings. There was a concern run up regarding, uh, spot zoning. I want to remind you of what the planning commission did to Cal Ranch for their request to zone. They were denied. The Amity Station Trailer Park, which is grandfathered for decades, they were denied. They're out of business now. That's not your position here. It's encouraged business. Well, they went after the Amity Station Trailer Park method was done with, uh, Keith Carson's trailer park just one block down. He has only one trailer, three or four modular homes, and RVs from time to time. Not licensed for any of that. And if I'm home, I wouldn't see it. I've been issued two citations for putting RVs, modular homes, door, modular home on my property because zoning violations. There's discrimination there, Mr. Chairman, and it needs to stop. On one hand, the city and the county are claiming there's a housing shortage, and yet there's vacant property throughout the community. My family has quite a few. Why is it zoning? Yet I see others getting away with, uh, things that shouldn't be happening. Recently, uh, Mr. Chairman, a family member of mine, um, has property on eight forty-two, uh, Hoffman Street here, given a notice by the building inspector. The garage was used as a, is used as a gaming room for the family. When the big TV in the living room is used, the kids need to do something, so they go to the garage. But they were noticed that put water and sewer in the garage. I noticed RVs throughout the community hooked up to power, people living in them. I don't have a problem with that. Why is my brother being noticed? I want to know who filed that complaint. Nothing was said about the new business that went in next door. No ADA access, no ostrich parking, a mandatory regulation, and the building inspector appears to be selectively enforcing that well.
Okay, thanks, George. Appreciate it. Any other public comment? Seeing done, we'll move on to, um, item A, discussion for possible action. Approval of a tentative subdivision map. The owners, developers, are Terry and Randy Rec, who wish to create an extension of the Aspen Heights subdivision. The subject properties are existing parcels within the existing subdivision map. Uh, I believe it's Peel, addition to the town of Healy, uh, recorded May fifth of nineteen oh nine. Uh, APNs are going to be zero, zero, five, two, eight. It'll be three, zero, one, four, zero, one, six, zero, one, and seven, zero, one. Open for discussion.
Buddy, you're on back, and Tasha, I'm going to represent back brother to answer any questions. Uh, we're working with some engineering, Tom Hammond, and we're going to overall conceptual plan for the entire parcel. But what we're to look at today is just the extension of the Aspen Heights, the Aspen Heights extension to, uh, finish that out, uh, with, with the submitted design, create a turnaround, uh, thoroughfare, so people can... Currently, right now, the street dead ends onto the property, and, um, they just have a dirt road there. So, the concept is to build the eleven lots out at the end of that. And it's, it's a part, but not a part of the rest of the conceptual of the, of the rest of the parcel that's still being worked on by some engineers, and this is just a portion.
Okay, so would you, like, are you considering this like phase one? Is that what you're kind of looking at? Or is the intent to do the whole thing all, all at once?
Uh, and, and as far as the eleven lots, that could be interpreted as the initial phase one.
Okay.
Uh, the phase one, as depicted here, the utilities, the infrastructure for the utilities is at, is stuffed at the end of the road. It's all available. We've talked to, um, BJ, based engineering, as far as service, service ability on that system, whereas the rest of the conceptual design is going to require infrastructure, uh, installation and still further infrastructure study.
Um, can you tell me, was the existing, um, was the existing plan to include those eleven houses? So, in other words, was the infrastructure placed in there already for the eleven, um, houses?
And I, I personally have never seen any of the initial design or layout of the Aspen Heights subdivision as, as it is, only as it's been built.
Okay.
Uh, and based upon the, the survey and the, and the maps, it looks like it was built up to that lot line of where it currently ends, and it, uh, at the time, that was how it was designed and approved.
Okay. And I, I guess mainly, the main reason I'm asking is, is, uh, from what I understand, um, this, this area is a little bit challenging as far as sewer system, and, um, and so is, is, is the existing sewer system that's in place here, is it adequate enough to handle those eleven homes?
And I believe that BJ has issued a letter saying that.
That that is, okay.
Yes, yes.
And then, how about power? Are you planning on taking power, um, from the existing subdivision? Or is it going to be brought from a different location?
Uh, it, it would be an extension of the existing subdivision. And at this point in time, we have a one or two, uh, Mount Wheeler power for, uh, power design or, or...
It's kind of the beginning phases.
Right, an analysis. Uh, you do give an approval here, get this approval, take it to the next step. Same thing with some of the engineering. We have, everything is preliminary based upon our approval.
Okay.
What is the intent? To stick build homes there, correct?
Yes. Yes, and, uh, stick build homes to stay within the concept of the current subdivision.
Okay, so they'll, they'll be seeing a level very similar to what's already there?
Yes, yes.
In size and design?
I have a question. It states that both the sewer and the water is from Healy. Is, is that sewerage going to come nearby to the cities?
That, that, that's correct. My understanding of it is the sewer and water is the city of Healy. The sewer system is, uh, the initial construction was put in for the industrial part, and then the subsequent construction of the Aspen Heights subdivision was added to that, and it goes to the station, and it's all pumped back to Healy, yes.
It's not an issue now, but I see, uh, if that is ever fully developed, city and sewer and water will have to be supplemented in some way.
So, do our questions need to be more specific to just this area?
Okay, sounds like it.
Looks like it's, there's a lot to do and steps of approval that need to be done. So, um, I, I said note here that, you know, recommending approval of the map only, and then, um, you know, you still have to work with Mount Wheeler and all the other issues there.
Yeah, so, so the, the follow-up steps to this is after we get approval, we finalize the design. The design goes to NDEP for water and sewer, for the utilities. We go to Mount Wheeler Power, meet with Jake, and, uh, get the analysis done as far as service, and, uh, if we have to upgrade, or if the system he has to now can service the eleven lots. And, and it is all, uh, everything happens in this steps.
So, being that it's kind of an extension, and we're still going to be under the subdivision section because it's still more than four parcels, right? So, we still need to, all the infrastructure as far as roads and streetlights, all of that stuff needs to be included in the, in the proposal, um, at the end. Is that correct, you might, um, with that? Okay. And so, just, I just want to make sure that that was, that's all. Anything over four homes, uh, is technically considered a subdivision? So, all of the, um, all of the infrastructure, um, as far as the streets, um...
Yeah, and I believe, I believe the following page is often, on this middle, incorporates that and it shows, um, the tentative design. I know that there is some of the tentative design. There's no existing sidewalks out there, I believe, in the tentative design. It shows the sidewalks, like, um, they would be sidewalks that would go nowhere, so we need to make sure we're on the same page.
Yep, and that's all, that's all I was bringing up. It looked, uh, for me, it's, it, um, I see the, the road, um, section, um, as far as the, the physical structural section, um, that's incorporated. And I, I'm intrigued. I like the fact that we're going to put a little, um, median in the middle. I think that's fantastic, just to add a little dimension to that because it's not on the, it's not in the existing, uh, way.
And, and I think the detail for the median, the median is one for the parkway, uh, proposed, on the other conceptual. I don't think that the right way is wide enough right now for the median on that street, but, but, uh...
So, what is the right away current? Well, yeah, what is the right away currently for the, the, the new section? That we're talking about the eleven parcels?
It's, it's going to be the same as the existing, I'd absolutely pronounce, as far as.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're not, there, there's nothing that's going to change integrity of the street or the, or that design.
I don't suppose there is any zoning issues with that?
Based upon what I've been told. Tom Hammond with Summit has been doing a lot of the integral parts on, and, uh, it was his plan to be here. I'm surprised he's not. He was the key to that, I'm sure.
But I'm correct in understanding that these eleven lots, it doesn't appear that there's going to be any utility issues or zoning issues, or, or anything to be able to move forward with those eleven lots, where there could be questions? Do we get into those?
On the rest of the conceptual, yes.
Either Tom's aware there's some private parcels in this?
Yes.
That would have to be purchased.
And those private parcels are, um, they're dimensioned off the, the map from, the file from, uh, nineteen oh nine, or twenty-five, or one hundred, but, you know, they are...
Get some unbuildable lots in there.
They're, they're unbuildable lots, so I'm trying to work on that to, to either trade for more lots or straight out, buy out, or whatever, but they're, you're, you're correct. There's a smattering of those, um, lots throughout the, the overall parcel.
Right, okay.
So, what are we approving?
Just the tentative parcel map. This is just tentative, okay? It's not your final parcel map. They will come back with a parcel, with a, with a subdivision map for this that will, um, detail like the streetlights, fire extinguishers, all of that will have to be outlined on that.
Okay, so we will be limited this again?
Right, this is just kind of to get them going, say yes. Am I correct in saying so?
Tentative subdivision now.
Just to get them going, so they can, like, work on their parceling that needs to be done for these lots that they anticipate building these eleven houses on.
I'm curious.
That, that's correct. And with that approval, they move forward with the, the, uh, official survey and the surveys available, the meets and bounds, and they establish the meets and bounds for the new lots. So, all those things require this first step.
Probably some type of tentative approval to move forward with the utilities as well.
That's correct, that's correct. We will try to present, uh, an idea to the utilities, and NDEP definitely needs all of the parts and pieces, uh, approved prior to their review, so...
I assume if any of the people that actually live there had objections, they'd be here tonight. Tell them this about that.
And, uh, and we didn't know, we didn't know if there was going to be a response, or we tried to be good neighbors, and they utilize a lot of, um, when I say are, you know, Terry and Randy's property, a lot of the little roads and the access that they have is across Terry and Randy's property right now. They, they utilize the back lot access. There, there has never been an issue.
Do they actually know that what your plans are, the people who live there, or?
And, and I don't know that.
I don't know.
Actually, that, for a tentative parcel map, it does not require a public hearing notice to be posted. So, I'm sure that could come down the road as we get more into more, you know, once they, once they do the rezonings of these parcels and do the parcel map, um, the divisions and such.
So, they do have to be resolved, then? The current zoning for those larger...
Right now, I believe they're zoned oh five. So, they would have to be changed to meet the size requirements of those lots because none of those, I'm sure, are five acre parcels that they're going to build houses on. So, you know, once they divide those on the, on a parcel map, they would have to rezone those as well.
And then they would get noticed with the, um...
Zones.
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet of that property, they would all be noticed, um, of the rezonings for sure.
Cool, well, this is a positive thing if you ask me. I'm, I'm, you know, I mean, we kind of touched on possible negatives, but I just have to say, I think this is great. This is what we need to see, so...
So, we're really excited, and we're thankful that, uh, somebody's taken that step forward and moving on. So, um, we just, uh, I think we've seen a few incidents where there's been a slight lack of communication, um, in what happens. So, if there is one thing I could say is, I don't, I don't know if it's possible, but reach out to those, uh, community members and try to inform them as much as possible about the, you know, the benefits and what's kind of going on, just so that things don't get misunderstood and people get angry and, you know, that it's not worth it. I think in your, your guys' view, if you can kind of help to, I guess, sell that, it, it will be, uh, a very positive thing. I can't imagine this being a difficult thing to come through, but just open, open up the doors and communicate to them and try to encourage, uh, as much education about the project as possible so that it, we don't get miscommunication.
Yep.
And one more thing on notices on this. Um, once this board makes a decision, then that decision does get forwarded to the White Pine County Board of Commissioners, and so it will be presented to them at their meeting.
Oh, awesome.
So, that gave will, we have to speak out on what was going on as well, and speak out on your questions or comments about it, so...
Great.
It's a lot to go through for just a tentative, right?
And, and, and we've been working on this for a while, as far as putting it together and how we, um, we have a lot of conceptual, we have a lot of the, uh, those other lot issues that we have, and then, you know, we have, uh, an overall, well, I'll call it a master plan right now, and it's subject to change, but, and the steps all have to be gone through. And there seem to be, uh, a logical step one, phase one, to get, get that going, and then everything else that's going to require... This expansion doesn't require the infrastructure expansion and analysis that needs to be done for the future concept.
Yeah, that's great.
So, whether that's more of the station, bigger water, more, uh, all those things, they're, we have to be determined for the bigger development.
And I can, I can assure that Kenna is also very positive about this, but that's eleven homes. You know, on eleven homes, to start off with, then...
Eleven more, right.
Exactly, so, so there's, so thank you. We really appreciate you guys pushing forward with this. So, do I have a motion? Oh, quite sorry.
One more question. Do the folks out there have lawns? Most of them?
Most of them, the existing ones.
Most everybody has lawns. Um, and, and I, I don't mind the candor on that, is, is, uh, uh, anybody really handy at Terry, you know, they would like everything to be really nice, and they're hoping to boost some of the appearance of the front yard.
Some do and some don't.
Yeah, and so we're going to have couches in the front yard, and two vehicles, and an RV, oil stains on the ground, anyway, you know.
I mean, it's a good place to expand because I know it's, it's easy to sell homes out there, not so much in some other areas. So, for the most part, people take care of the properties.
Oh, yes, without a doubt. Yeah, it's not a, it's not a bad place. We just want to, um, we want to try to do a kind of a, you know, some, make it desirable, but match what's...
So, may anyone know, on that note, is there any HOAs in White Pine County at all? Do you, that you know of?
Blue Diamond Estates has an HOA.
They do?
Other than that, there's some CCNRs in other areas, but... That's not an HOA.
I don't know. I was just curious.
Can't hear you. You need to speak up.
Yeah.
I, I, I couldn't hear it. It wasn't open enough for the mic to pick it up.
Oh, my question, I was just curious.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
I know, I do, I'm sorry. Um, I, I was just curious about HOAs because I haven't seen any, but I guess Blue, Blue Diamond Estates does have an HOA. I was just curious, um...
Curious about what?
Oh, okay.
HOAs, Homeowner Association.
Thank you.
Okay, do we, so are we in a motion to go forward? Do we do? I'll move that we accept. Or then present it?
Okay. Run motion?
Uh, I'll go ahead and second that.
Approval of a tentative subdivision map that was presented here tonight?
Most likely, yes.
And there's no question that it's just a lot going through eleven of them.
Second?
Right, I'm sorry, I'll go ahead and second that, yes.
All those in favor?
I am.
All opposed? All right.
And just for clarification, I was clarifying the original motion. I was on the original motion.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so, motion A passes. Section B, discussion for possible recommendation, uh, regarding the adoption of uniform building and zoning codes between the city of Healy and White Pine County. Where they opened this?
I'm, I'm curious to know, I would assume they are the same. Apparently, they are. But this has been on other agendas. What's the difference?
Some are uniform code of whatever, and some are the international code of whatever. Some, I believe, automatically update, and others, uh, they don't, so they lag behind in time. The Board of County Commissioners is, uh, in the process of approving, I believe, by the end of May. A lot of it's the international standards with the Building Department wanted, uh, and, um, energy codes we did not have. And, uh, the city of Healy is going to propose the same or similar codes be adopted or changed, amended, however you want to say that, in their city code. And then that would make the job of the building, uh, official, the department, uh, much easier and, uh, would be the same throughout White Pine County, whether you're in the city for it or outside the city for it.
Now, from reading last minutes, there's three on this barge from the city and three from the county? Is that right?
The nominated, yes.
So, why hadn't this been done before? Is there somebody opposed to it?
I don't know the history, sorry.
Well, we've got a new building official that has really dived into going through the building codes, um, which is good because he's found a lot of inconsistencies and a lot of things that need to be corrected. So, um, he's very much, you know, working on correcting those issues and making everything uniform.
It ultimately kind of difficult for him to do his job if there's three different, um, three different codes that he has to, has to abide by. Not to mention, um, not to mention it's, I don't know what, it, I don't feel like it's that appropriate for our contractors to have to know the building code for the city of Healy versus the building code for White Pine County separately, and then the state, whatever the state has to do with that. So, um, the theory would be to try to combine these all together, which makes a good sense, I think.
So, what can we accomplish? Just say, we think it should happen?
Um, if you've discussed anything, or if there's any issues, just, that was kind of the purpose of having it on the agenda.
This, this item is on the agenda mainly for the purpose of, if somebody's come to you with an issue regarding, um, not just building codes, but the zoning codes, and, you know, they would like for the board to explore that, to maybe look for some other options or see if there's another option, um, that could be changed, and then it would have to be presented to the county commission for approval. You know, should there be an ordinance or some kind of code that you want to change, you can make the proposal to the county commission, and then they would have to be the ones to have that to change it.
So, the county can't do it alone, the city can't do it alone. They've got to get together. Is that where the hangup is?
The idea to make it uniform throughout the county and the townships and the city of Healy was basically that, you know, supposed to get everybody on the same page. I apologize, I don't know the history of why, uh, they either drifted apart at some point with different codes or decided to go with different codes. If different building officials knew different codes, and it was just easier to do it that way, I'm, I'm not sure. But that's the idea.
And I don't, I don't think there's necessarily, um, like a hangup on it. I just think it was kind of overlooked, um, in years past, and it's not been something that... Because some of those codes, when you do it like a uniform code, some will update just as they update, um, some don't. And so, over time... Some don't. And so over time, they haven't like updated together. And so really, the whole point was just to, just like try to, try to identify all of them and, and clean up basically more or less, try to get it cleaned up.
So this has been on previous agendas?
So.
Just kind of a.
At least one.
This is on every agenda.
It's kind of like an open item, just so that we can openly discuss it. If something just happens to come up and, you know, you know someone who's having issues with the inconsistency or something.
It's just on there so we all realize there's differences.
Well, so the, when we, when this new board first formulated, there were some concerns as to, are we, are we hindering the building process, basically? Are we hindering the, the process of building new homes, redeveloping, anything like that? And so the, it was brought up in a way, and this has been posted here as an agenda item, just so that we can bring up those things. So if a contractor comes to us and says, you know, this is ridiculous. I can't believe they're making me do this, or I can't believe they're making me do this, or I, somebody who's potentially wanting to build a house. If they have to go through a bunch of steps that seems redundant or excessive, this gives us an opportunity to look, to pull it up, to talk about it, to try to figure out what we can do to make that better, more efficient, more streamlined, so that we don't necessarily hinder the process of redevelopment or building. Is, is really kind of ultimately what this agenda item was, was placed, paced on, placed on this for. So the theory was that if we can bring it up and we can discuss it, we can identify those issues. Like, like when this first came out, I went to most of the contractors and said, are you having any issues? Are you having any concerns? Are there issues with the way things are being approved? Or if there's an issue with getting a permit or whatever. It, it just gives that opportunity for us as a board to kind of evaluate that and say, hey, we really want to change this or we want to look at this so that we can streamline it better.
So this will always be an agenda item, just so that we can have a conversation about it?
Just an opportunity. Yeah, because otherwise we technically couldn't, because it's an, because it would obey, it would, it would not abide by the open meeting laws, so.
Okay.
So if we don't have a motion of some sort, it'll be on next month's agenda, right?
Yeah, it'll be on.
What kind of motion?
It'll be on, it'll be on, it's just discussion. So this is, we don't approve anything on this. We, it's just a, like a potential recommendation item, but it's merely just discussion is really what it is. And then if, if that came as an issue, then we can say, okay, we want this on the next agenda item.
And it's often we don't have any discussion at all. It's just on there, just for that opportunity, so.
I mean, it is, it is likely that, I'll use the term boots on the ground, the contractors, the developers, the engineers, the architects, the people in the community who are coming to the community to develop or improve what, what we already have existing, may see something that the eyes of the building official and the building department don't see. And it's brought to our attention. And, and then we're, we're able to address it here or, or perhaps through modifying, amending, revising the code or, or putting something in addition to, to make it more streamlined, to make it easier for the developers and the contractors, but all the while following the good building and construction practices that are necessary for health, safety and welfare.
So if we made some sort of a motion that we thought would start the ball rolling, then would that go to our county commission and then that to go to the city council before anything actually changed?
I don't think we have anything specific to make a motion on. This is just allowing us if we do. But if you have, you know, some people that have talked to you about a zoning issue now, that, we always have that opportunity to discuss it without having to make a specific agenda item. So it's just kind of a.
Okay, so, so it's just a.
Yeah, this one isn't safer action. It's just possible recommendations. And if we ever had one, then we would make it an agenda item specifically.
Perhaps think of it as another mechanism by which the public could bring to the attention of the regional planning commission or the building department of an issue that we don't know about or did not foresee in drafting the adopted codes, something to that effect. So I, I've got no motion in my mind.
That's okay. Most of the time we don't. Honestly, most of the time we don't, but it's just a great avenue to, to be able to discuss it. So if, if, if something does pop up. Because ultimately, like I said, at the beginning of this board, when this new board started, our goal was to streamline the process. We just, we just wanted to, we wanted to try to streamline, you know, this redevelopment process right here or whatever, make it as smooth as possible, so.
When is this new board, when was it founded? January twenty twenty. And it was an RBC for a little while, right?
Now, reading some of the literature that Carol had, apparently on January first of each year, they have to approve the committee because three represent Ely, three represent the county. Is that still in the works or is that way old stuff?
I think that was just our first meeting when the RBC was reformed.
Okay.
That they.
I think that was basically over the money. Who's paying? Who for what?
Right, there was an ordinance that was written that is in effect, that governs the RBC. So they pretty much laid out the regulations for this board.
Okay.
And that was adopted by both the county commission and the city council.
I've got a lot to learn.
Me too.
We are, we are different.
Any further discussion on item B?
I don't have anything myself.
And I don't, I don't have to, if there's no motion, then, so, no, no motion, then we can move on to item C. Item C, discussion for possible action, approval of minutes from the regional planning commission meeting that was held on March sixteenth of twenty twenty-two?
I didn't see any mistakes. So, so I'll move that we get them.
Yeah, I didn't see any. Well, well done.
It was, it was a worthy one. It possibly worked.
It was a bit too narrow. I'm allowed to second that one, probably just to.
I'll go and second that one.
We second the, um, the approval of the minutes from the regional planning commission meeting that was on March sixteenth of twenty-two. Any, any, um, we'll go, we'll open for a vote. Anybody have, um, I guess the Niles? I'm trying to think of what I'm trying to think of here. Sorry about that. Do we have any eyes for passing discussion for possible action, item C?
I'm in favor.
Any not in favor?
So a nay? Pardon? That's a nay.
Not in favor? Are you not in favor of approving the, the last meeting?
The minutes?
Well, I made a motion to.
That's right, you did. So it's not better?
Okay, so item C is passed. Moving on to the public comment.
Ladies first.
I'm just here to, they have questions with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm very unhappy about the sound system. We spent thousands of dollars and I could not hear two-thirds of the conversation. It's the last time I'm gonna tell you guys that. You're in violation of the law. Look at the open meeting law. Mr. Chairman, in the past I've asked and I've not done any answers in regard to the planning commission, the county commission, Ely City Council, the date of non-adjacent co-violations by members of the planning commission, the White Pine County Commission, as well as some of the Ely City Council members, in particular, Councilman Flankis, Councilman Aworth, Councilman Spear, they all have businesses, but they've got zoning considerations and they've yet to address them. I want some answers. Going back to August thirteenth, two thousand twenty, at several previous meetings, I reported that RVs, possibly squatters, were setting up throughout the city. I wanted to know how many of them were paying landfill, water or sewer fees? Nothing yet. I presented that to the city council. I also gave that to you folks back in February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. I've got a, a date stamp of August eighteenth, twenty twenty, from the city of Ely. And again, I'm reporting, nothing to date. We're missing a lot of revenue. You guys want to make additional rules? It's not good, folks. Mr. Chairman, I'm asked for a complete list of properties and individuals that the city has permitted to allow RVs to park on city lots and city streets while living in them. Nothing to date yet. I've received two citations. Three hundred fifty-five dollars at a pop. I had evicted four different people and I'm not gonna be treated any differently than anybody else. I've lived here longer than most of you, if not all of you, of unequal protection under the law. Mr. Chairman, I'm asked for a complete list of parking permits at the city of Ely and MDOT has given to those along Great Basin Boulevard, in particular, the area of the new courthouse, the jail, sheriff's office, Ely Fire Station, Driscoll Hotel, and the copper, I couldn't just name a few. They're allowed to park on the backside of their sidewalk, yet I am not. I want to know why. And if there's a permit, I'll ask for that. It's been months. We're going back to last year. Also, on different areas along Great Basin, they're not meeting ADA code. Those streets are supposed to be straightened out, yet they're not. In some places, a handicap person cannot get past a light pole or an obstruction. You need to look at that. On the corner of Avenue G in Great Basin, MDOT and Q and D have messed up my corner. I dropped one foot off my parking lot onto the sidewalk. It's not the code. It doesn't mean ADA. You guys are dealing with the international building code? You better look at it real close. You're in violation. I haven't seen one notice either to the state, the city or the county, and you need to address that.
Thank you, George. Appreciate it.
I've got more, but I'm not getting any answers. I'm not happy. I'm telling you right now, Mr. Chairman. Your personal animosity, but I'm dying on a vine in my own home community and I'm not gonna stand for it. I'll tell you that right now.
No, we appreciate it. Thank you for communicating that to us. Any other public comment? Okay, do we have a motion for German? Motion to adjourn. Be a second. All in favor?
I.
Anybody opposed? The German passes. Thank you. Tell him he needs to come back.
I know, I know. You must know, you have to go, because you never miss.
Yeah, at least first round, I. Yeah.
Mike's an awful. That you've got to be close enough to them.
Okay, and I know I'm so, I'm.
Yeah, but it was too far apart, but I could move closer to it. So you just want to move it away. Because I was sitting right next to it. Really?
Do you have a list of those?
Oh, okay, that's.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatchis reporting.